So the region is already in session. I'll call the Southborough School Committee into session as well as the Union.
I will call Northborough School Committee to order.
Very good. First order of business on the combined agenda is audience sharing. Does anyone have anything to share?
Can you just identify yourself, please?
Hi, good evening. I'm Katrina Whelan from the Northborough Teachers Association.
I'm Mary Rose Steele from the Algonquin Regional Teachers Association.
Hi, and I'm Vicky Gardula from Southborough Teachers Association.
And we are here this evening to over our concern that the schools in our communities, like many districts across the Commonwealth, have been underfunded for many years. We appreciate this opportunity to address the combined school committees tonight in reference to this resolution urging the legislature to update and fully fund a new foundation budget for public education in Massachusetts. This resolution is a pathway for funding our schools that does not rely on town funds and presents a great opportunity for all of us who care about a rich, high-quality education for the children of our communities to come together in a common cause. In 25 years, the formula used to calculate state aid to schools has not been revised or updated, and districts and students across Massachusetts are the ones suffering the burden. In 2015, a bipartisan committee determined that Massachusetts public schools were being underfunded by $1 billion annually. The Mass Budget and Policy Center, using a formula to determine Chapter 78 to school districts, calculated that our school districts would receive an additional $1,30,200 annually if the foundation budget was fully funded. This could do wonders for our students: create learning opportunities for students outside the classroom, reducing student activity fees while increasing access to extracurricular activities, providing opportunities for increased support and advancement of student learning. Classrooms could be fully supported with technology. Teachers could have enhanced professional development opportunities. Students could have their social and emotional support bolstered. We should not allow the legislature to fail to act on updating the 25-year-old foundation budget formula as they have done in the past despite various proposals to do so being on the table. That is why members of the STA, the NTA, and the ARTA are asking you to continue to support our schools and communities by passing this resolution and join the likes of 28 and counting school communities across the Commonwealth that have already passed such a resolution. With your support of this resolution, our communities can add our name to this call to Beacon Hill. Let's fund our future. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. If I could respond to that, I'm pretty sure we sent a letter to the governor. It was a while ago now on this topic, but I'd be happy to revisit that. We're not shy about sending letters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to applaud the committees. I think a direct result of the letter-writing that we have done and certainly our teachers who have, in a very, very busy week, taken additional time to visit with us this evening. They also provided, and you have this copy as well, the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission Report was distributed and an update from Mass Budget. We have seen slight relief from some of the corrections, some of the resolutions that have already been implemented. There were some implemented each of the last two years, and our communities have seen a slight increase in Chapter 70, which I'm sure has helped in the sustainability and passage of our budgets each and every year. But moreover, the individual initiatives that we've supported through our letter-writing campaign, I think we've realized this evening have definitely made a difference in that our transportation for regional schools has in fact gone from 65% to 72%, and Circuit Breaker has gone again 65% to 72% in FY '20. So that's direct correlation to the work that our committees have done consistently over the years and will continue to do so, I'm sure, again this year. MASs and MASc usually provides also a draft, very, very similar document to what is before you this evening, but we can certainly put this on letterhead and bring it back for signature as we've done every year next month. And we can do that at each individual committee because we do not have a combined for some time, and it's good to get this in their hands before the budgets start. So if it's the will of the committee, we will rewrite this, put it on individual school committee letterhead, and bring it back to each of our January meetings.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is action on minutes from the combined special open meeting of October 22, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, October 22, 2018, as stated for the Northborough School Committee, Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, Northborough-Southborough Superintendent's Union Number Three.
Very good. Seconds on any of those?
A second for Northborough.
Second for the Reach.
You?
I can second for the Union. And I can move for Southborough.
Katera moves for Southborough. Second for Southborough. And Roger, second for Southborough. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, I think. No abstentions, right? One abstention. Keatle abstaining. Everybody else otherwise unanimous. Bring us to the 2019-2020 school calendar draft.
It is a pleasure to bring this draft before you this evening. The only point of discussion, given our past discussions about placing the moratorium on the calendar in terms of religious observances, is where we place the Professional Development Day. As I shared earlier, we have still a virtual PD in the calendar one day when we develop this sort of innovative approach to professional development. We did say that we would approve no more than two days as virtual days, given that it was our first year and we're still collecting data on the success of that one day of implementation, and teachers are still working with their own professional development plans with that new format. We are not ready to propose a second day if we're going to do that at all at any point, but definitely not now for next year, but rather we've done exactly what was requested in terms of separating the two March Professional Development Days and have moved one to town election, to state elections, which is November 5th next year. One of the reasons that it moved out, of course, is because of the sort of start/stop to this school year in terms of just where a lot of those days fall. But next year, the month of September looked reasonably solid with several five-day school day weeks right off at the start in October as well. So again, recognizing the concern about being present on election days, we've split the March days. One still remains in March. It's sort of the closing of one school year and the launch and excitement of the planning for the next school year purposely situated in the month of March, and moving the other PD day to Tuesday, November 5th. And that is the only consideration in terms of the calendar for next year. As is practice, it's great when all three committees can be aligned in the acceptance of the calendar, given our shared busing and students in different schools, but within the same family. So I would ask you to approve this calendar so that we can get that out, believe it or not. We already have people asking about the calendar for next year, and we love to have that planned early on so we can begin our summer programming model.
Okay.
So I have a question and a comment. So just for clarification, you said that we moved the PD day to November 5th, and where does it normally?
So last year, we had two professional days in March. We had March 11th and this year, March 11th and March 29th. So we've taken the March 29th and moved it to the 30th, and moved the 11th to November 5th on Election Day. It's the same number of school days, and one of the Professional Development Days still remains a virtual day out of the calendar, but a requirement of our teachers. And they are loving that experience. They've already left, but they could attest to that themselves.
Kelly? Oh, sorry. Are you done? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I heard at the last meeting one student speaking about having the professional day on Election Day, and I definitely am in support of that. I loved seeing that on the calendar. I think that safety is really important for our students, so I love seeing that change and I'm definitely in support of it, so thank you.
Kelly?
So is there a reason why we can't move the other March one to the midterm elections on May 5th for like the town? Because that's when like the town elections are and then things like that are usually an Election Day.
We try to place the professional days at a point in the calendar when it's most meaningful for our teachers as well, and to every great extent coordinate that with elections. And I believe it's next year, there are three different elections that are taking place because it's a presidential election year. So it's not always easy to coordinate with all of the election days and our Professional Development Days. I think there are some other conversations that are taking place about voting in schools that will address some of the other issues, so that's ongoing at the same time. And so this is the calendar that we're proposing for next year.
Joan?
Just on the record, I had the same concern as Kelly. I know, you know, thank you for taking care of the one in November, but I'm also concerned of the town elections that we have in both towns. Yeah, you know, I don't know if it's the second Monday or if it's...
It's like the first Monday or something?
Yeah. Fourth or the 11th, I think it would be. So, I mean, I think that we need to consider that when we look at the next calendar. We can't do it through this one, but I do have a concern. We got one, but I think I'd like to have both if possible.
Well, then you've got to throw in a primary election day.
Right. There's three.
So, yeah, there's three then. I mean...
Or get them out of schools.
Or make it headway. Or make it headway.
Yeah, I mean, the national one seems to be the most, you know.
Susan?
I just want to say that I think this is a good compromise, seeing as that there are multiple election days, that at least we're making some progress, so.
So in past years, what was driving the placement of the Professional Development Days was the fact that we were sharing resources for professional development with other towns and other teacher associations. So, you know, given that we're sort of moving to a virtual model and all that other stuff, is that still a concern? Are we still doing some combination of professional development with other towns?
Not to the extent that we've had in the past. So what we are doing is a lot of intra-sharing as opposed to inter-sharing, and quite frankly, it gets very complicated with other districts, more so than it was in the past, because what drives the calendar has changed. So aligning all the Professional Development Days with MCAS schedules, Religious Observance Days, Voting Days, it's really gotten to be a little bit more cumbersome, but rather the sharing of resources and the professional development that takes place within our collaborative schools hasn't changed. It's just not always embedded in the day. So there are other opportunities for that that are taking place. We do job alikes. We do Professional Development, job alike sharing with the Aspen Collaborative, and the Virtual PD has really helped expand the model of having to be in somebody's classroom in order to have a professional development experience. In fact, some of the early reports are that, you know, the teachers have actually enjoyed coming together over the summer and doing a lot of planning, curriculum planning, book shares, you know, just developing instructional resources on their time and separate from being tied to the school day, any given school day. So early reports are out. The association has put out a survey, you know, trying to get some feedback from how teachers are using that, and we're tracking all of that through our PD Smart user system, where they actually have to log their professional development, and we record their hours and what they're working on. So again, this is just the first year of that, but so far the response has been favorable.
All right. We entertain a motion, motions on the calendar perhaps, but for Southborough, I'll move we accept the 2019-2020 student calendar.
All motion for Northborough.
All move for Region.
Second for the Region.
Second for Northborough.
Second for Southborough.
I think we need a Union vote on that one, right? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
That passes. And that brings us to the distribution of the Aspen Valley Collaborative quarterly report.
This is required by our membership in the collaborative. Again, each year, we speak very highly of the opportunities and particularly the Professional Development opportunities that they provide at such a reasonable cost, and we also benefit significantly because we do collaborative purchasing, and our special ed transportation is all coordinated through the collaborative. So being a part of this, a membership fee doesn't even begin to address the amount of return on our investment as being a member of this group. So this is just for sharing and no action necessary.
I like how it's just one page instead of...
With pictures.
I just like the map.
Any questions or comments on that? All right, on to the personnel report. There's a biggie on there.
One in, one out. One appointment, one retirement.
That brings us to the superintendent's search survey results. Oh, sorry. Kelly?
So for the appointment of the interim business manager, did I recall from the thing, it was, he was only planning until like January-ish? Has that changed? Do we...
It was, there was no final date. It was determined by when we're able to find a business manager. That is...
Okay, because I thought he was saying that he had something coming up in January and he could get us through the finance.
It was a possibility, yeah. It was a possibility in that he would let us know if his availability would be limited or not available at all, and that isn't the case at this point. So he's still with us, and I hope he remains so until we're able to fill the position with a qualified candidate.
All right. At this point...
I would like to suggest through the chair that I recuse myself.
Just going to mention that.
Yes, with all due respect, I think any conversations about questions and process is best not with the sitting superintendent at the table. So thank you all. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Good to see you all. It's nice to have a full house.
We do have Mike Gilbert here from MASc with us, who's going to present on the results of their survey and focus groups and hopefully answer any questions. Anywhere up here at the table, please?
It takes me a while to pack up.
I know.
Three forms to pay.
No problem.
All set?
It takes a while to pack up.
Okay.
I don't travel light. I apologize.
No problem. All right.
This is where the muscle's built.
Does everyone have a copy of the summary of the focus groups and surveys?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I will let you know that this is my last official act as a field director for the Mass Association of School Committees. I'm retiring.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's all the rage.
It's contagious.
Congratulations!
Thank you.
I was at the convention with you, giving you prizes.
Oh, thank you.
I remember the little gift scenario.
Yes. So over the last couple, few weeks, there were seven groups of folks who got together, focus groups. Those totaled about 50 individuals who showed up, which is actually, for a search in these times, is actually a large number of people. Generally, we only have a handful of people who show up for focus groups. They'd much rather fill out a survey than come out for a focus group. So we had about 50 people show up for the focus groups. The online survey yielded almost 350 responses online, which is terrific. That's a very large number in terms of responses for an online survey as well. So the good news is, I think, that you have a very interested communities in the process of selecting your next superintendent. In terms of the mix of people, about 58% were parents of current students. Employees of the district were about 31%. Residents without students in schools, students, and others made up about another 11%. And the other category generally are people who identify themselves as being in multiple categories. So I think one of the things we want to talk about is the strength of the district, and I think it's pretty clear that academic performance is one of the strengths of the district, as well as students' opportunities, both in a curricular and extracurricular areas, and the music and the arts programs as well, athletics were frequently mentioned throughout the responses. That is also something that we often don't hear from parents, so that's, I think, a solid strength of the district. I think the faculty is also viewed as being a strength of the district. Their teachers are highly committed professionals, and they care about the students, and that teaching and learning is described by both parents and faculty as being very student-centered. And I think the community was also seen as a strength in two ways. It's being supportive and interested in the schools, and this sort of strong connection between the schools and the communities. The collegiality of the staff also was something that was pointed out. In asking the, in the survey, we asked them to name the five strengths and assets of the district that the next superintendent should preserve or strengthen. There was some minimal overlap between community stakeholders and employee stakeholders. The top ranking of educational excellence was indicated by parents and guardians. Staff relations was the top ranking for employees, and curriculum development and educational leadership appeared on both lists. Areas of growth, there were a number of concerns that were noted when people were asked about areas of growth for the next superintendent to address. Among the community members, there was a concern that the high rankings of student achievement were beginning to slip. There's desire to have this addressed so that the excellent reputation the districts currently enjoy does not diminish. Respondents also found class size to be a positive attribute for the districts, but other noted, others noticed that a concern about larger class sizes. Another issue to address noted by both the community members and the staff was consistency and equity in programming resources and facilities at the different schools. To some extent, differences were noted between the Northborough and Southborough districts. Community members sought more equity in resources to ensure that all students were equally prepared to enter the regional high school. In addition, there's a perception that curriculum and programming offered in different schools, even within the same district, is not aligned. Respondents saw this as one area that the next superintendent would need to address. And I think administrators also expect his desire to have more opportunities for them to collaborate across the districts. At the same time, they valued the high academic achievement. There was also a concern expressed about student health and well-being. I think you heard some of that tonight as well, that certainly the need to address both the social and emotional well-being of students is a concern in the district. And certainly at the highest, parents of high school students talked about dealing with concern about dealing with stress in an academically challenging environment. So members of all stakeholder groups mentioned Special Education Services is an area of concern. Would also say that both independently and relative to equity between the towns, the issue of tuition-free full-day kindergarten was frequently mentioned by parents, and this is seen now as a best practice in education. However, this is, this is not just your communities, but the general area here is one of the pockets in the state where tuition-free full-day kindergarten is often not available. So I think that's, it's interesting, it's communities that have a relative affluence in suburbia that are having us, having to struggle to create tuition-free full-day kindergarten programs. I think one of the things that came up in focus group discussions, the unusual but not uncommon structure of superintendency union in and of itself, and while people understand the complexity of the job, the concern over whether the current administrative structure is sufficient to support the superintendent. In terms of the next leader, the goals that were informed by the challenges that people articulated when respondents were asked about goals the next leader of the district should pursue, advocating for the budget to ensure that the needs of the district are met, was high on the list of all stakeholders. Faculty and staff emphasize the need to create a culture of respect among staff within the district, and addressing the social-emotional needs of students and meeting the needs of an increasing diverse student population were also important to faculty and staff. Stakeholders also prioritize strong communication skills and transparency as important attributes for the next leader. Not surprisingly, people place a high priority on timely and accurate communication that leaves them feeling well-informed. Students in the student focus group expressed a desire for the superintendent to be visible and involved with the student body. And I think respondents also indicated that it was important to have a collaborative leader who could build and inspire a team. Among other top skills, skill in developing and managing a budget was also the top, in the top five for both parent, guardian, and employees, as the ability to understand and recognize good teaching. Overall, the emphasis on the skills the next leader should possess clearly centered on educational leadership. In addition to understanding and recognizing good teaching, the ability to attract a high-performing team, success in recruiting and retaining staff were high on the list. Classroom and previous administrative experience was important to many respondents. In addition, respondents placed importance on successful regional school administrative experience. One question in the survey asked respondents about the importance of the next superintendent having knowledge of the communities of Northborough and Southborough. There was a divergence of opinion here, with 65% of the parents and community members indicating knowledge of the communities was not important or somewhat important, and conversely, 57% of employees felt it was important or very important. Without prompting, respondents in both focus groups and on the survey expressed opinions about the superintendent's search itself. There was a strong expression of opinion the district should be looking externally as well as internally for the next leader. While some respondents felt strongly that the next leader should be from outside the districts, others felt that due diligence required a comprehensive search from the outset that would include internal candidates as well as external candidates. If the internal candidate was the most qualified, he would rise to the top. Some respondents felt that a leader from outside the district would provide new perspectives and perhaps a more critical eye to some of the issues faced by the district. Some felt that an external person would have more success in building a relative culture of respect in the districts and that this was important to address. However, it should also be noted that there were some strong expressions of support for the internal candidate.
That, I will take any questions you may have. And I believe you all have the spreadsheet that, one paper copy.
I'd like...
Here you go. I just assumed not taking home with me anyway. Questions, comments? Joan?
The last part, when I looked at the Excel sheet...
Sure.
And I downloaded question number nine, and it said, "What questions would you like the school committee to ask of the superintendent?" Are those questions, or the general fill, those questions, is it embedded into your report, or is that something separate?
It's embedded in the report. Basically, what we do is we'll take the subject matter out of those questions and apply it to the, to the skill sets and qualities.
And just to follow up to question number nine, would this be something that you would recommend that we share with the person that we select as a superintendent? recommend that we share with the person that we select as a superintendent to get an overview of what the community is thinking of at this time?
So I think that in terms of when a new superintendent comes in, now under the education evaluation system, they're going to have to create an entry plan. So sharing this information with whoever the new superintendent is, is a helpful first step as they go through the district and do their own due diligence to create that entry plan, which they will present to you. They will be evaluated on the effectiveness of that entry plan as a first-year superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
You wouldn't share it with a candidate, though?
Would not share it with a candidate, would share it with the final superintendent.
So I find it odd, not just for our district, but, and so I'm wondering what the general consensus is with other towns, that the divergence of opinion with sixty-five percent of parent guardians and community members indicating knowledge of the communities was not or somewhat important. Is that typical?
Yeah.
That is.
I think, you know, staff want, they want somebody who has an understanding of their culture. So they want somebody who has some familiarity with that. Parents have a tendency to look at it with a more critical eye, and it may not be as important to them. I think they want that person, when they come here, to involve themselves in the communities, but it's not necessary that they already be here.
One of those numbers is wrong. Sixty-five percent of parent guardians indicate knowledge of the communities is not or somewhat important, and fifty-seven say it is, that's way more than a hundred.
No, no, it's the other group.
Yeah, employees, okay, sorry. But also, I don't know, to me, there's a different way to look at those numbers. If you put in, what were the choices? Not important, somewhat important, very important, or important? Somewhat important means it's somewhat important. So arguably, you can lump somewhat important and very important together.
You can lump that either way.
And it comes out to seventy-eight percent.
So staff includes educators and administration? That's what staff?
Any employee of the district.
Any employee of the district, okay.
So the search process, it says that the community feels that there should be internal as well as external search. What is, as you, what would your advice and opinion be on that matter? Because I feel like there's probably a mix, the same as there's a mix in the community, I think there's probably a mix here also.
Sure. I would say this to you. You're a high-performing district. I think in a high-performing district, it's like a high-performing corporation or organization. If you look at the top corporations and organizations in the world, they generally do something that is sort of an anachronism to public education. It's called succession management. And if you have a culture, and you want to move that culture forward, and have a sort of culture of continuous improvement, having someone who has an understanding of that culture, as Jim Collins wrote in Good to Great, moving that flywheel is a lot easier for somebody who already has an understanding of the culture than it is for somebody coming from the outside who's going to spend at least their first year learning everything about the district before they move things along. So I think that's something to consider. I also think that, from the perspective of if we're looking to create a pool of candidates, it's when community members look at this, they look at comparing candidates to other candidates. That's not what this process is about. This process is about creating a set of skills and qualities and issues that are important to the district, and comparing each candidate to that set of skills and qualities that you want. So if you have a candidate, and that candidate meets those skills and qualities that you want, then hire that candidate. If you have fifteen candidates, you're going to weed out candidates based on how well they fit that profile. Because what we're really about trying to find as a school committee is the candidate who best fits this district at this time. I would also say that given the lack of depth of the pool of candidates that are out there today, if you have an internal candidate that you have an interest in, and they have an interest in moving into the position, dealing with that candidate first and finding out whether or not they meet the qualities that you want clears the field. The first thing a candidate asks when they call me and say, you know, I'm interested in this search, the first question they ask me is, is there a strong internal candidate? If there is, oftentimes, better candidates won't apply. So if you've made a decision about your internal candidate first, you either hire them, or you then move on to an external search, and you'll get more candidates to look at, and you'll get more interest if there is not a strong internal candidate.
Which I believe is the process we voted to pursue last time, right? Let the internal candidate play out and go from there.
Yep.
On the last page, the search process. I know you and your organization have done a lot of these surveys, and, you know, the surveys, and also the talking to the groups. Would you say that the statement on the back is typical of what you see from people that they're saying, yes, we like the internal, you know, do the internal candidate, but yeah, we'd still like to do an external search, but yeah, we do like our candidate. I mean, so is this a typical statement that you see?
Yes, it is, especially at this point in the process. You know, nobody's been interviewed here yet. You, I think, and I hope, have a pretty good idea of what you want and what your communities want in terms of the qualities of candidates. I hope there's no surprises in here for you. The reason we do the focus groups and the surveys is as much to validate your thinking as it is to gather information from the community. I would hope that you, as elected officials, are on the same page as your communities are. Once you formulate a set of questions based on the qualities and skills you want to see, and ask those questions of a candidate, you may get a whole different perspective from members of the community. And I think that in this day and age, this is not the type of scenario where you're going to get a hundred applications, and you're really weeding down to a very narrow pool. I think what you'll get is, even if you've eliminated the internal candidate, you'll get twenty to thirty applications. And again, the narrowing down of that pool will happen fairly quickly. There are likely five to ten quality people who might apply.
And also the complexity of the districts. I mean, I think that there's difference between who applies for the regional, a regional school setup versus one who is just a local town, K through twelve.
It is interesting, what I've seen over the years, more and more is that the superintendency unions are fading, not because of any appropriateness of the structure, but the inability of administrators to effect change across multiple districts at the same time becomes a huge issue. Having employees that are working in two different elementary districts, the efficiencies are not there. And what we've seen in a number of places in the last, certainly in the last five years, some of those unions have either fully regionalized or put themselves on a footing to get to full regionalization.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to just jump back to the number of respondents, the point you made, both as far as responding to the survey and kind of responding to being willing to be part of a focus group. I think you had mentioned that you felt this was a fairly strong response, relatively strong response in both of those situations.
Yes.
So to say that, I'm guessing that you're really looking at the total number of people in the community. Because you could have a huge community, this wouldn't do that much, and you could have even a smaller community, and this would be tremendous. So did you base your?
No, I would also say to you that my experience in doing, and I've done superintendent searches in cities like Lowell and Haverhill, Haverhill in the last year, in Haverhill, which is a large city, I didn't get that many responses.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
It is more a measure of, I think, your community's interest in the schools than it is a reflection on the size of the district.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the survey, on the online survey. Was there any technology, like, people have answered more than once?
So we do, if asked, take a look at that, to see whether there were multiple IP addresses being done. We have the ability to, and I don't know, because I didn't look at the details of the survey, and I didn't discuss this with Dorothy. I don't know whether, when she set the survey up, she turned that ability off. We used to leave it open, because staff would often use the same computer. You have multiple staff members using the same computer station. But we do tend now to turn that ability to have the same IP address multiple times off, because most people now do it on their phones or on their iPads or things like that. So our tendency is to not allow the multiple responses.
I did bring that up with her at the beginning, so my guess is.
Yeah, so it wasn't allowed.
Still, that's only from one IP address. It doesn't prevent somebody from taking the thing from two or three different devices if they really want.
Right.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. Kathleen?
I'm interested in the comment about the stress experience of students. Was that seen across all cohorts, teachers, parents, and students? Is there a breakout on those responses? You've got the breakout.
I don't believe so.
You don't believe it was distributed across?
I don't think it was, I don't think it's broken out.
Okay.
I think if you go through the individual responses to that, in that area, you might glean some information from that. But in order to do that, I'd have to break out all three hundred and thirty-three responses and look at each one and say, they answered that question that way, so then I got to go back and, so that would be a tremendous task.
So it would be students and parents and district employees?
Yes.
That might have contributed to that statement as a priority?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. There's some more questions for Mike. I guess a couple of things we have to do here is decide the format we want to use for the interview tomorrow night, to tell you what happened in 2014 when we did Christine. I don't think we should talk about specific questions, just because they may get out there somehow to Greg. So that's why I asked everyone to just send me individual questions, and Lynn and I will go through them tomorrow. We could talk categories. Last time, categories were teaching and learning, leadership, budget, communications. MASC has a whole bunch more that we could choose from. Decision-making, judgment.
I didn't bring that printed document, this is about the same size.
Meeting the needs of all students is another, professional development, school committee relations, budgeting, financial, I think we covered it. So, if you like, we could discuss topics, you know, general topic areas.
So it's interesting, because it is alive. We're on live TV.
That's right.
I'm inquisitive as to whether or not even that makes great sense. You know, do we go around the room? Each individual member has the opportunity to ask, you know, one or two questions, not fifteen, you know?
Well, I can tell you, the way they did it in 2014 was, I guess there was a small group that came up with the questions. Probably there was input from the whole committee, I'm virtually certain there was. Joan, maybe you remember. So they came up with a list of questions, just handed out, and people just went around the room, asking a question from that sheet.
It wasn't their question, it was just the next up on the list.
Exactly. And then, they were trying to keep the whole thing to an hour, which, you know, I guess there's pros and costs to that, I mean, you don't want the thing going on forever. Although, the other thing was, there was a Northborough School Committee meeting immediately following the interview, so that probably played into it, I'm not sure. And then there was some time for some audience's questions or comments. I think there was like fifteen minutes left for that, but it didn't take anywhere near that long, so they came back, and then other members were able to ask additional questions. And there was about five or six of those, probably.
So I have a question about the process of having a list of questions, and then having everybody take turn in asking one of those questions. Now, do I presume that Christine knew that the list had been pre, she realized that the question wasn't really coming from the specific person who was asking it, or not? Is that what we want to?
I don't know, but I would guess that she didn't. Do you remember?
No, I think that.
It's from the committee, so it's all of us.
I think she knew everybody had the same list.
You wouldn't want duplicate questions, so you'd have to have a communal list, because many members might have the same question, that would be a priority for them.
I understand, I'm just, I'm actually questioning the approach of having everybody ask a question, you know, is that?
Versus one person just asking the questions?
Does everybody want to get on camera and ask a question, even if it's just reading from a list? Is that beneficial? But I don't know.
I guess symbolically, it just is the, it echoes the will of the committee, and this is, these are the questions.
So it's a symbolic process?
It's a collective.
Well, yeah. I mean, you're right. I mean, I'm a journalist by trade, and that wouldn't be the way I'd conduct any interview.
Well, the whole interview process, yes. Quirky.
If, you don't mind, if I could give some advice. Generally, with school committees, because the process of creating the questions has to be done in public, if you're going to do that as a group, generally what I advise school committees is, each school committee member, go through this data and come up with three questions. That way, if your question gets asked before they get to you, you have a backup question. In an hour to, even to a ninety-minute interview, you're going to give that individual three to five minutes to make an opening statement and introduce themselves, for you guys to go around and introduce yourselves, and the same thing at the end, a closing statement, and for them to ask questions of you. You're roughly going to have about fifteen questions that are going to get asked in an hour to an hour and a half. So if you each came up with two or three questions, then the likelihood of an overlap would be minimal.
So you're not advising to send the questions in and have them filter your say?
You can do that, you can do it either way, but if, again, it's sort of like choosing the topics, too, it's.
But how would you ensure that you're touching on all the topics you should touch on?
That's, and so you might share that with the chair, so that the chair can sort of figure that out.
Well, that's more or less what I had in mind with the process I suggested, but Joan,
In my recollection of, especially the assistant superintendent, all of us did not ask a question, but we had, the questions were already printed on the paper, so we could see, and we could make notes as we went through. I think another thing that is beneficial is that it's just not question, answer, question, answer, because it seems like, is like have a dialogue go along. So I think that at one point in the process, and I've listened to Christine or someone previous, we allowed a member, the chair would say, is there a follow-up question to that? Because, you know, the candidate may give us an answer to that question, but something triggers in your mind, God, okay, this is what I, okay, so if there's a follow-up question, not that there's twenty, so that there's a nice dialogue going along, and there's one. dialogue going along, and if someone has a question onto it. My thing is that somehow, I think that, not overruling you, but I think, you know, if, between now and tomorrow morning, you have a lot of work, is to get, my thing is to get the questions to the chairs, so they can look at it. Because I think we're going, we may have common themes that we want to see, and there's more work for us tonight to do. But I think, give it to the chairs so that they can synthesize it down and make sure we're hitting it all on, they're not all on curriculum, they're not all on the budget, that type of thing. And see where we go from there. That's just my recollection. I, because in the past, we've always had the questions, and then we had the time to write it in. I think with Greg as assistant superintendent, we all did not get a chance to do a question because we figured there was going to be too many. But again, this is now the superintendent. This is a high-stakes job, and I just think that we need to do our due diligence. We make the teachers go through a process, we make the teachers go through a process, where they even have to do sometimes a model lesson, and this is now the top job. So, we have to do our due diligence, and this is the thing that we're appointed to do and elected to do. Thanks.
Well, that's, I mean, if we had a list of questions, we could say, Lynn, you're going to be running this meeting, so you're going to agree, but if someone has a follow-up, just raise your hand.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing, I like that Joan of having the questions in advance, is that you have space in between, people can jot down the notes.
Yeah.
Like, and then if they have a follow-up later, you know, or they have their question that wasn't quite answered, you know, they can ask another question. You know, so that, and they can also kind of remember when they're reviewing the answers, they have something written down, if they want to, you know, or they have it on the laptop or whatever.
Kelly?
So, I'm new to this whole process, obviously. So, is the idea that after the interview, then we make a decision, like, right then and there? Or is there, like, I don't know how this process goes.
I think the agenda item says, it leaves that as a possibility, but...
It says discussion.
It says discussion of the candidate or something like that. So, we can, if we want to, I guess, is the answer. All right. The item is discussion of the candidacy of the internal candidate for superintendent of schools.
And so, the idea is that we ask questions for the one candidate, and then he leave, and then we keep discussing, or...
He would be excused, probably. I mean, he probably wouldn't be comfortable being here while we discuss what we just heard. And it is standard protocol if they would leave the room.
Even though it's on live TV.
Even though it's on live TV. You'll be watching.
Close circuit.
Joan?
And I think the process that we've done is, like, the candidate comes in, makes an introductory statement to us, we ask the questions, and then at the end, they could do another follow-up. Maybe there's something that triggered, that didn't come in, the introductory statement that they could make at the end. But again, as Paul and Lynn and Sue have been doing, this all has to be done in open session. There isn't anything, I mean, if we did an executive session, we did any discussion, we'd get our hands slapped. You know, it's against the law, so it has to be all done in an open session, which is the discussion and everything. And I think in the past, I think that even the chairs have contacted, I think when it was Christine, when it was Charles Gabron, they left completely, didn't know how long it was going to take, and then I think they just made a phone call.
And for the previous, when Christine was hired, was it, did she have an internal, was it just an internal posting, and then she had her interview, and then you went to an external search additional, or no? It was just, that was it?
We never did external. We hired her.
We did her, we did the...
Go ahead.
We, same process that we're doing right now.
Okay.
And then we interviewed her, we had the discussion, realized that this, we had a strong internal candidate, we wanted to offer her the position, we did not want to do an external, so then we took a vote that night.
And was there, was there like a survey or something done from the community prior to that?
Yes.
And did they say that they wanted an external search, or what was the vibe of that, if you recall?
I can't remember.
I, I mean, I think it was pretty similar, like, where the, the, because, but I think what people, one of the things that we do with our assistant superintendents when we hire them, they come from external, so they come out, they come from. Like Greg, he's only been with the district for, what, five years?
Five years.
So, and they, and that's, and so a lot of the things that sort of I think of when people are looking in the community, they think, think they, we need to look at an external candidate, and a lot of times you see it in the survey, was to bring another perspective. Well, when we sort of bring in the assistant superintendent as being from the external, it kind of gets the best of both worlds. You get someone from outside who has, who has an experience in other districts, other areas, another career up through the ladder, and then we kind of get, you know, sometimes they work out, sometimes they don't. We've had assistants that didn't work out, and so, but then when, you know, so that we're trying to looking, as Mike said, the succession management process, which, it's true. I mean, I was just thinking about that last night, about all the, you know, the major companies, that's a big thing, you know, is succession management on, you know, like the stock market would be, you know, they would go crazy if a big company did not have succession management in place, and someone, you know, the leader was to retire and they didn't have anyone in place. So, that's, you know, but the way they do it and the way we kind of do it is kind of bring the person in lower, have them, you know, do they like working in our district? Do we like them working in our district? They get familiar with the district and sort of get the best of both worlds that way. And as long as, you know, if we have a good internal candidate, you know, we go that route. And then other times, they, you know, we've, long before, there was a time of a succession, you know, some assistants haven't worked out, and then we get another assistant that hopefully does. I think that happened, like Christine came in that kind of manner, so.
So...
Next to you. Kathleen?
Let me peripheral vision if you guys are there. So, I've been on a lot of screening committees, a lot of screening committees. Some of them run very well and some of them not so well. And the ones that were run well, actually, the candidate, whether it was internal or external, gave us feedback that this was one of the best screening committees and one of the best hiring processes that they'd ever been through. So, it's just not my opinion, or not just my opinion. So, I think that the, the lessons that I learned from the ones that were run well is that they're very structured, they're very, they're, well, basically, they are what you just said, which is, the questions are synthesized, you hit every topic so that it doesn't look like, and this is sort of why I'm concerned about everyone having three questions, is because you sort of look disorganized. So, I think that everyone should have three questions, send them to you, or Lynn, or whoever, and you synthesize them, make sure that, I mean, there's going to be themes, there's going to be duplicates, make sure that every, you know, topic that has come up in the survey and the focus groups is hit upon. And one of the things that I think is a nice touch is that they are typed up, all the committee members have them, so that we can take notes, but it's also nice to have it on the desk in front of the candidate, right? Right when they sit down. They're not getting them ahead of time because it, and this, I think, is sort of standard in education. I don't think it's just our screening committees. So, this is sort of the process that any candidate is going to be used to. So, I think that's also something that we should, we should consider, is to make sure that there's a copy of the questions for them, too, that they can refer to.
Okay.
Oftentimes, those questions are multi-parts, and, you know, asking them to remember everything while they're trying to answer the questions, having it in front of them is helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Kathleen, because I know in the past, I mean, you're also looking at, to see their style of leadership and that, and how thorough they are. And like what Kathleen said is, I know candidates in the past would say, after they gave their response, excuse me, I'm just going to read the question again, just to make sure I hit on all the points. So, you're going like, okay, they're just not, you know, taking the question, they're being very thorough. And so, some of that leadership and their work ethic comes out when you do it that way, so I agree.
Okay.
To give it to the candidate.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with that. I have a kind of a separate question from Mike. The, I'm curious about the delicacy of asking about change of an internal candidate who currently has a boss who's, you know, they're still under, there's probably no way to resolve that, but I just wanted your opinion on how that would normally go.
Well, I would hope that they would be themselves and address those things directly. They are, they are, certainly in this case, they understand that this leader is leaving and a new leader is coming in. If they have an understanding of what the committee and the communities want, then they should be addressing those issues in that fashion. And if some, if the committee's looking for a change agent, then they should say, "This is what I expect to do." I think oftentimes, it's more a matter of the committee member's ability to not paint that internal candidate with the brush of their boss, because, especially for assistant superintendents and principals, you as a school committee don't generally see the arguments and opinions that are shared in cabinet meetings, administrative meetings. Those never come out in public. So, the assistant superintendent today may not be on the same page as the current superintendent, but would never express that publicly. So, that's the, the real piece of this is for you as committee members to mentally be able to put aside the current superintendent and look at this candidate as, what are they going to tell me that I want to hear that's going to move this district forward? I would also say, to your point about making the decision tomorrow night, if you're ready to make the decision, then make the decision. If you're not ready, then that may not be the best fit, and you may then want to decide to go out. Generally, most people, after going through that interview process, especially for an internal candidate who many of you at least know superficially, you will, you will have a gut feel. And to Joan's point, you were put here to use your judgment and wisdom to make the decision, and all that waiting is going to do is make your phone ring.
Joan?
But I don't think we should rush through the process.
No, I don't, I never think you should rush. I never said you should, yeah.
And I, and I agree, thank you. Is, just like Paul had said, well, I think that last time, maybe it was a one-hour interview. I don't think that we should say, okay, you know, it's like 55 minutes, we have to get this done. I think this is very, very important. If we did an external candidate and we were narrowed it down to an internal and external, we'd be doing, job site, we'd be going out to that district. We would be having a contingent go out and do onsite interviews. So, with an internal candidate, we're not doing that process, and I hate to say, I know it's coming to the holidays, we have so many things, but I think we should dedicate a really good time tomorrow night on it, and really, and we have our homework tonight.
So, I'll agree with that. I think we should be, you know, reasonable, though, and so if the evening is growing long and it's after 10:00 PM and the candidate's been in the seat for three hours, I mean, at some point, we need to be responsible and reasonable, but you're right.
For the longest go on.
Yes, so, but it, but, but I don't, I agree. I don't think it needs to be limited to an hour, but, you know, we need to be responsible on this. I, I also agree with Kathleen, I think we're building a consensus as to what maybe a good process would be, is to get our questions to the respective chairs, or who and by when, because we also need to be...
You can send it to both of us at the same...
Yeah, that might be best.
Okay, and we also just, I want to be, I want to be respectful of your time and other lives as well, and you don't want these at 6:30 PM.
No, it's got, I think I said, 9:00 AM tomorrow, because I'm dedicating a few hours after that to just sort through this, and, I mean, there's no choice, you know?
And if, and if someone's question doesn't get in by then, obviously, I think, any candidate, any committee member should be able to ask a question, even if it didn't appear on the list. I mean, if something comes up in hearing something, unless everyone disagrees, I mean, you should still be able to ask a question.
Everybody's got the question guide?
From the MAS C.
From MAS C? That in the back has the questions you can't ask?
No.
I don't think everyone does have that.
That was one of my other...
That was another 35-page document. I'm happy to send it.
Okay. So, I, because I think if you're going to allow follow-up questions or questions off the cuff, everybody should understand what are the things you can't ask.
Okay.
Illegal.
Wire breaks.
I think they're familiar with most of them, you know, things about, I don't know, religion, stuff like that. But I'm happy to send you the 35-page document.
And it's at the end.
Yeah, it's at the end.
You could skim through the end.
But Mike, I had a question. I mean, is it a good practice to set some kind of time parameter on the thing for the, so the candidate knows, well, I'm not going to be here for three hours, like Dan says?
Yeah, and I think, you know, for final interview, 90 minutes is usually sufficient to get the responses that you want to get. I always tell candidates, you know, if you've talked on a particular question for more than three minutes, you're going to lose your audience anyway.
Yep.
So...
What if we did, like, an hour for the initial interview, 15 for audience, and then another 15 for any follow-ups from the committee?
Closing remarks.
Closing remarks.
Would be a good guideline.
Mm-hmm.
What did you mean...
If we stray over a few minutes, it's...
What did you mean by audience?
The audience can ask questions tomorrow.
They can?
Yes.
Or make comments, yeah.
Wow, okay.
So, we did last time?
We did?
Yeah. I saw the DVD.
Wonder if you'd do that?
So, if it was an external candidate, we would be doing these site visits and interviews there, so we are just presuming that...
Well, not exactly. You do a site visit and you'd interview, like, administrators, principals, school committee members, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. So, we're just presuming that we have enough of that knowledge at this point not to do any of that?
Well, he's been here five years, so, yeah. I mean, you know, we did have the focus groups, we got input from all those people. That was the purpose of that.
And that was on him specifically?
No.
No, it was about what they want in a superintendent, I guess.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's a really good point, like, so, we are just assuming that everybody in the admin and stuff that things are well...
No, I've taken, I've asked Lynn and Susan to, I don't know if you saw the email about this yet, but there are some people I want to talk to, to, you know, basically do, what's the word?
Due diligence?
Yeah, due diligence, reference check, even though these people aren't necessarily references. Actually, it was an idea that Katora brought up. So, yes, we'll be talking to some principals and maybe some directors.
And that's happening before?
Yep.
And we'll have those responses before, and, or...
I'll be able to give you the gist of those.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just asking, because I know you were saying, like, if the interview's going well or whatever, and, you know, we're going along to make the decision, and then afterwards, we find out that the reference checks weren't actually that great. That's what I'm just concerned about, is how that would play out.
That's the idea, that, you know, we'll, we'll have reference checks in hand, I mean, in addition to the ones that Greg is supplying us, but that's the idea.
So, would you do, when you're, when you're doing those reference checks and you're going to directors or principals or whoever, are you going to be doing, like, 33, a split between Northborough? Do some from Northborough, Southborough, and the high school?
At this point, we're going to get whoever we can in a few hours.
I know, you don't have a lot of time.
No.
You don't.
And I would just say that, you know, for internal candidates, if there was a groundswell of opposition, you would have heard it by now. Your phones would have rung, your emails would have filled up.
Yep.
You know, whether there's a groundswell of support or not, depending upon timing, people sometimes tend to rein themselves in rather than try to influence the committee. But when there's opposition, it usually will float to the surface fairly quickly.
Yeah.
I think I heard you... I think I heard you, um, say it, but, and I just want to make sure I, it was kind of thrown in under, we haven't really talked about it. In that closing statement portion of the time, like most other job interviews, did you mention something about if he had any questions for us that we would add?
Yep, usually, usually the chair would ask, you know, this is your time to either ask any questions of us or make a closing statement.
Or vote.
Yeah, or vote. Joan?
I'll throw the chair. Have you ever had any situations where the deliberation has gone long and they still need more time? Has the committee taken two days, two different meetings for deliberation? And if they do, is that, is that a negative for the candidate? Do they see that as a negative or not?
Not necessarily. I think it, it, you know, I, I would be, I think you do this all in public. So, you know, my mother's rule, you never say anything bad about somebody. You know, if you don't have anything good to say, you don't say anything at all. So, you know, how you, how you deal with that deliberative process, um, there are also people who, um, sometimes have difficulty making decisions. It's their personality style and they need more time to absorb information. And if that's the case, um, the only thing you need to be careful about is making sure that you post appropriately because you can't continue a meeting to the next day. Um, you have to, you, you would have to post 48 hours ahead of time. So the, the best you could do if you decide tomorrow night that you're not ready to make a decision is post for 48 hours from the next morning to, to, uh, continue the deliberation and discussion. I think at this point, people who are looking for these positions understand that it's a difficult decision and it's an important decision for the committee to make and they would rather they take their time than, um, than force a decision on the committee. And, and with an internal candidate, I, I would say it's also easier for you to, um, to do that, um, given that that person's already here and they're not worried about employment somewhere else. And there aren't any other searches going on at the time where that person, you know, where you've got competition, so to speak. Anything else? Kathleen?
So on the superintendent searches I've been on where the candidate is external and we do a site visit. We are at a table this size and there are, um, different factions of parents, community members, uh, staff, employees that are basically handpicked by the candidate for us to interview.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it seems like.
Yep.
So, um, so is that, it's, just to be fair, should we do that with an internal candidate?
I don't think a site visit on an internal candidate is all that helpful. If you were, if you had, if you had three candidates and you were talking to all three candidates at the same time, then I would, I would probably in order to at least appear fair, do, um, do a, a quote unquote, site visit for that individual. The due diligence is probably a little less for that than it would be for an external candidate. I would also say to, uh, to a school committee that was doing site visits, um, while, you know, I asked the school committee, what are the, who are the people, types of people you want to see in that district? And I will tell them, okay, that's great. Make sure you set aside time to go find a local coffee shop and just ask a couple of people on the street. So that you do get at least something outside of the setup to get that, to get that response. I, I will tell you that the, the people who, the, 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 the people who don't get the job generally, um, it's something they said as a candidate or did off the cuff that sold them down the river. It's not, it's, it's not usually anything that came from a, from somebody you interviewed or a site visit or anything like, it's usually something from the candidate themselves, either in an informal setting during a site visit or in, in the interview itself that would turn you off to, to them as a candidate.
Thank you.
Joan?
In closing my remarks.
Can I hold you to that?
Yes, you can. Where's the tape? Grab it. I just have two recommendations, um, since we're talking about the process, is that I think that if we decide to, when we decide to take the vote, my recommendation is the most senior member, is that we take a vote of the region, of the union, the full committee of Northborough and the full committee of Southborough. The reason being is that someday, somebody who is on the Northborough or Southborough committee but is not a union member or in the union, may be a union member, may be a regional member, may be that chairperson that has to work with that superintendent to write that evaluation. And we've done it in the past when it's always, and I know it's past practice, I hate to say it's in the past, we've done it, but it gives every, this is, this is the most important thing we're doing, okay? And I think that for that reason, and I think it gives the confidence to that person to know that it's a full committee. And everybody has been elected by their towns and in the region they've been voted on both towns. So I, that, that's my recommendation. We've done it in the past, it signals, and that's just only my recommendation. The second thing is that if we go with the, um, that whatever we do is that I'm sure that even if it was an external candidate, would be a meet and greet. And as assistant superintendent, the candidate that we're going to see tomorrow hasn't had a full voice because of the, just of the, whatever school district it is, okay? Because the superintendent is the leader. I would think that we would offer the same thing is have a meet and greet because maybe parents then would get to know that person better or if they have a concern, would bring it up to them at that time. Because as assistant superintendent, that was not the hierarchy to do it. So those are my two recommendations and I'm done.
Thank you.
I agree. I think this is the most important decision that we as school committees can make. And I think we need to be absolutely squeaky clean in the way we make it. And the regional district agreement and Christine's contract both say it is the superintendency union and the regional school committee. And basically, if you don't want to abide by that, then we should change those and not just change the practice. Because past practice has been, those have been the governing bodies to make the decision for the superintendent.
I think in the past, we've, we've had the, those two bodies, um, take the vote and then subsequently, um, all the committees vote. And that way, we're following-
Informally.
Yes, informally.
It's not a mess.
It's in informally, right. But the, the two bodies that have jurisdiction also by mass general laws are union superintendency agreement, our regional agreement. All those things are legal agreements. Um, and, and the law makes, tells you to abide by those agreements and that you have those agreements for a purpose. But then, you know, as you say, I, it's important that everyone, um, then we would have a, the votes of the, all the members of the Northborough and the Southborough committees separately just to, you know, be a-
Completely agree. You have to follow what the, the agreement says. So, and in the event that there's a vote in the affirmative, then surely, then you would ask for, um, you know, the other, the other committees to, to either show support if they'd like and if they don't, whatever that comes out, but it's, it's, we have to follow the agreement.
Okay. So do we have consensus on the, uh, the question part of this? So if you can just send questions to me and Lynn, both, I guess, and then we will power out tomorrow, try to make sure that we're touching all the important topics. And I, I like the idea of printing them out, leaving space in between, people can make notes and they'll take turns asking questions. We'll leave time for follow-ups. You know, both during the interview, if you have a follow-up, raise your hand. If I'm okay with you. And then at the end, you know, should have some time for some additional questions if anyone has. Sound okay?
Makes sense. Motion to adjourn?
We're done.
If we don't have anything further?
Sound good?
For Southborough. I mean, for regional.
I move for Northborough and the union.
Move for Southborough.
Second for Southborough and the union. Is somebody taking minutes?
All right, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.